It's not like the Godfather was dead.
I got 6:30. I'd like to call to water the regular school committee meeting of Wednesday, September 13th. Please excuse my voice. I had a little surgery, but I think I can do this. So please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain still and I'll defer to the superintendent.
Thank you very much. We have a number of memoriam's tonight. If you could please keep in your thoughts and prayers these individuals and their families. Dr. Elizabeth Betty Bostrom, 31 years total. She was the principal of Wallison Elementary School for 16 years and also served as the assistant principal of Central Junior High School and a teacher at Daniel Webster Elementary School and Point Webster Junior High School. Next is Constance Boudreau, cafeteria staff member at Murray Mount Elementary School and Atlantic Middle School for 34 years. David Brown, teacher for two years at the Adams Elementary School. Peggy Joyce, cafeteria manager at the Daniel Webster School for nine years. Ed Miller, 21 years total with the Quincy Public Schools, first as a physical education teacher and then as athletic director for six years. Mary O'Connor was a teacher for 21 years at the Gridley Bryan School, Parker School, and Snug Harbor Elementary Schools. Ann O'Leary, paraprofessional for eight years at Murray Mount Elementary School. Paul Pekarsky, teacher for two years at Central and Broad Meadows Junior High Schools. George Essekovich, 37 years with QPS, retired as a Quincy High School assistant principal and after being a Spanish teacher there for many, many years. Again, if you could keep these individuals and their families in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. There was a very long list of fond memories. Many people I had close contact with over these, as I'm sure many of you. So thank you and we're all sorry for their loss. I'm going to ask Mrs. Owens if she could read the recording message. Mrs. Owens, oh, roll call first. Sorry. Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Bergoli, Mrs. Cahill, Mr. Gatro, Mrs. Hubley, Mrs. Lebo, Mrs. Santoro, Mayor Coke, and North Quincy High School student representative Amy Tan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Owens, if you could read that.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, June 14th. Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mr. Bergoli, all those in favor. Opposed, I'll take a motion to approve the executive session minutes of that same night. A motion, Mr. Gatro, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, all those in favor. Opposed, the ayes have it. We also have minutes from the organizational meeting of September 6th. Motion, Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mr. Gatro, all those in favor. Opposed, the ayes have it. Going to call upon Mrs. Owens one more time.
This is the open forum policy. Open forum is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or an employee of the Quincy Public Schools. Non-community persons not permitted to speak at open forum may submit written statements to the school committee. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Interested parties may also submit written statements to qscopenforum@quincypublicschools.com.
Thank you very much.
There were no letters submitted for open forum?
Okay. Is there anybody here for open forum? Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Courtney Cordios and I live at 86 Walco Street in Quincy Point. And as a parent, I just wanted to voice my concern over some scheduling conflicts that are coming up this week. Parents tomorrow night has some choices to make. First of all, all middle schools in Quincy have open house tomorrow evening. This isn't necessarily a conflict for some families, but many families like mine have a child who attends their districted middle school. In our case, our youngest is at Point Webster and another child who's a middle schooler at Central Middle School in the APC honors program like my middle child is. Again, this may not be an issue for those split families as one parent may be able to attend one school's open house while the other parent goes to the other. However, for those families who don't have two parents or who have two parents but one works nights or has to stay home with younger children, this poses the problem of picking which child doesn't get to have someone there for them at their school. There are also many families like mine for whom both parents would really like to go to both middle schools and meet both of their children's teachers. This conflict happens every year for families with a child in the APC program at Central and another child in their neighborhood middle school. I'd like to suggest that in the future, we consider moving Central's open house since that's the school that houses the APC program which pulls students from all over the city to a different night to make things easier for those families with children that attend Central as well as another of Quincy's middle schools. Additionally, the community meeting that the city of Quincy and Quincy Public Schools is co-hosting tomorrow night to discuss next steps and solicit neighborhood feedback on plans for the new Squanam Elementary School was also conveniently scheduled for tomorrow night. Now families in Squanam have an additional decision to make whether to attend their middle school child's open house or be able to listen and be part of the meeting that their community has been asking for so that they can hear the plans for the new elementary school that perhaps might impact one of their younger children. How can the city and QPS in good faith co-host a meeting and say community feedback is important when they've set it up so a good portion of that community can't make it? Wouldn't it make sense to have had this community meeting in a few weeks once families have settled into the new school year and open houses have been completed? Parents want to be involved. Parents want to know what's going on. Parents have ideas to share and good questions to ask. It's not fair that we continue to make things difficult for parents to stay involved in their children's schooling. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Anybody else for open forum? Item three, superintendent's report. Item A, chairman's report. Mayor Coke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You doing well?
Thank you.
I just want to mention three items one was just referred to. Tomorrow evening, we have the Squanam Elementary School Project Community Meeting going to be held at the Squanam School. And we did a letter out to the district, appreciate the work to date from the building committee and the team. And we've indicated in the letter that this is a meeting to solicit opinions. We're not showing any designs at this point. It's really getting feedback from the community about what is today. For example, traffic issues, drop off, pickup. I know we have some drainage users in the neighborhood to kind of get all those thoughts on the table from the neighbors so that as we proceed with planning, we can address some of those issues. Initially, we'll be introducing the team and then explaining the process and the steps with the SBA as we go forward. And there'll be additional meetings going forward as we begin the design phases. So certainly want the public to know that's 6:30 tomorrow night. We have a special thing coming to Quincy next week. Some may be aware of it. We're just in light of the 9/11 22nd anniversary and the Tunnel to Towers Foundation is coming with their mobile exhibit. We're going to have a ceremony, opening ceremony next Tuesday at 3:30 and then it will be open the 20th through the 23rd, 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. It's a very large trailer truck that is turned into a museum with exhibits and New York, retired New York firefighters do the actual tours through that. So perhaps we can arrange some of our school kids to make that trip while it's here. And thirdly, the De Cristofar Learning Center is coming along and we have scheduled October 22nd at 1 p.m. for the dedication ceremony and followed at 2 o'clock by an open house and tours of the building for folks that attend that. So just want to throw those out there and turn it back to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item is the welcome back to school. So in the last week, Quincy Public Schools has welcomed over 1,200 new students at all grades, including on youngest students in pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. Preliminary district enrollment is currently at 9,910 students with an additional 85 students in process at school sites and central registration. October 1st enrollment data and class sizes will be shared at the October 11th school committee meeting. I do want to thank all of our staff for making this year a very smooth return to school for our students and our families. Thank everyone from our professional teaching staff to our bus drivers, our lunch attendants, our custodians who worked tirelessly and maintenance staff who worked tirelessly over the summer to get our schools where they need to be for our students and our families. And of course, thank you to our SLT who worked tirelessly over the summer to hire over 100 staff members for our incoming students and families. So thank you all to all the staff who helped make this smooth transition back to school this week. On Thursday, September 14th, Governor Healy and Speaker Mariano will visit the Snug Harbor Community School at 11 a.m. The visit is in recognition of the Universal Free School Meals Bill recently passed by the Massachusetts Legislature. The Quincy delegation, along with sponsoring members of the House and Senate, will be attending along with Mayor Coke and school committee members. The governor and speaker will visit Snug Harbor students and staff in the lunchroom and classrooms as well as hold a press conference. Quincy Public Schools is honored to host this event, recognizing the importance of this very important legislation for our families. So thank you to the governor for coming to Quincy and highlighting this very important piece of legislation. Next is fall open house events. The calendar of events was shared with school committee and their packets. These events are a great opportunity for families to meet classroom teachers, learn about curriculum and academic expectations, and how to become more involved in the school community. And I would like to invite, personally invite all of our parents to become more involved in our school community. It is critically important for parents to be a part of the school community and become active participants in that. And we really do invite all of our parents to participate as much as they possibly can in these events. The first Squanam Elementary School Project Community Meeting, as the mayor said, will be held on Thursday, September 14th at 6:30 p.m. A letter of invitation was sent out to Squanam residents from Mayor Coke and Ward 6th City Councilor Bill Harris. The project team will be introduced at the meeting and the community will have their first opportunity for input at this very preliminary stage of the process. Additional community meetings will be scheduled as the project progresses. Next is the combined Quincy-North Quincy High School marching band update. This summer, the Quincy Public Schools Combined Marching Band Program had four students and four alumni go on to tour with a Spartans Drum and Beagle Corps from Nashua, New Hampshire. The students spent the entire summer rehearsing, touring, and performing in football stadiums all over the country. Thirty shows in 25 states in 10 weeks. Amazing. The tour concluded at the Drum Court International World Championships in Indianapolis where they won an open class world championship. Congratulations to Quincy High School students Aaron Earnest and Nathan Aronoff, North Quincy High School students Anders Esselman and Anthony Magnarelli, and an alumni Leanna Gao and Ethan Earnest, Gio McKenzie and Rebecca Deng as well. We could not be more proud of your hard work and amazing accomplishments. So congratulations to this very impressive accomplishment. And lastly, the Quincy Art Association is currently hosting an art show, Celebrate Quincy, at the Q Arts Gallery on Hancock Street that features student artwork representing all elementary, middle, and high schools in the Quincy Public Schools. This is the first in a three-year art project leading to the Quincy 400 Events in 2025. Can't believe it's coming up that fast. A reception will be held on Saturday, September 23rd from 2 p.m. to 4 p.m. and all are invited to attend. With that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Comments, questions? Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. You noted that there was 85 students that are in central registration right now. Are all of them spread out throughout all the schools? Or is there any one school that has like a large amount of students going to that one school that we would need to be aware of for?
They're all spread out. We've been monitoring the class sizes all along. And so, yep, I mean, they're scattered throughout the schools. And these students are not, they haven't been pending in central registration for a long time. Many of these students have arrived as of September 1st or thereafter. You know, five or six new students a day. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Lebo.
Can we make a note to check on that Central Middle School open house in the future and maybe not do it on the night that the other middle school's having?
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Okay, item four, whole business. Mr. Bergoli.
We have a dilemma with the school year calendar 2023, 2023-24. With the scheduling of the presidential election on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, an adjustment to the calendar is needed. This day will become a no-school day. An additional day will be added to the end of the school year. The last day of school for students, if there are no snow days, will be Tuesday, June 18th. The last day for staff will be Thursday, June 20th. These dates could be further adjusted for snow days that may occur during the winter. Any questions?
Put that in the form of a motion.
I can.
Mrs. Lebo.
I make a motion to accept the calendar.
Second it.
Second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Hubley. Superintendent.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatro?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Then Mayor Coke?
Yes.
Okay, new business. Summer QPS, summer programs, our reflection. Mrs. Perkins.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. I am joined by Mr. Marani and Mr. Sagala, who also were tremendous help with the summer program. So tonight, we're going to reflect a little bit on the amazing summer that we had this past summer. I think when you see what our staff did and how many children we served, how many staff we employed, you will be just unbelievably impressed with the work that went into these programs. I do need to also thank Bridget Vaughn and Kim Quinn who were instrumental. Kim ran a program and Bridget, you know, helping to organize to make sure that the program got off the ground and Chris Tierney as well. The amount of work Julie Graham, the amount of work that goes into organizing these programs before they actually take off is basically like the opening of school, but in the summer. So it was, it's a lot of work, but it was a really great summer. So just to share a little bit of information about what happened this past summer, you all know that we had a very active summer program that was based on enrichment and also academic reinforcement. We also incorporated health and well-being of students and staff. So we had a total of 20 summer programs this summer, which is pretty impressive. We serviced 1,742 students. We employed a total of 159 teachers and 97 paraprofessionals. And the programs ran from June 21st to August 9th. And we'll talk a little bit about each program. But the programming basically focused on our general education students, special education programming, and programming for English learner education. So just a little recap of our Bridge to Reading and Math program. It was a very successful summer. This is for students entering grades one to grade five. It ran from July 5th to July 27th and it had an enrollment of a total of 189 students at Clifford Marshall, which is pretty massive. Students in reading worked on things like letter recognition, letter sound, decoding, comprehension, or vocabulary, depending on their grade level and need. In math, students reviewed addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. They also played games to reinforce number sense and build fluency by practicing different strategies such as make 10 and count on. In addition to working on math and reading, the students had some fun too. They enjoyed a visit from Joe's Crazy Reptiles and they also had a visit from Wally and Tess from the Red Sox. And meteorologist Sarah Robloski from WBZ also visited the program. In the Quest for Learning program, this was an enrichment program and it was again for students entering grades one to grade five and ran July 5th to July 27th. This program serviced 295 students. It took almost, I think it did take the entire Beechwood Knoll School. And there were 34 staff members that worked at this program. So pretty impressive. Students participated in lots of different things throughout this program, but they participated in reading, math, and STEAM activities. The activities focused on things like collaboration, hands-on experiences, and strengthening academic skills. In addition, the classrooms were supported with social emotional learning strategies and techniques by our school psychologist, Mr. Picarello, who the students absolutely love. In STEAM, students completed activities involving straw rockets, tinfoil boats, penny drops, paper airplanes, coding, paper chains, and more. In addition, students participated in challenges against each other to encourage creativity through hands-on learning and the power of teamwork. In reading, students engaged in book talks and activities focusing on comprehension and main story elements. Learning tasks ranged from crafts, graphic organizers, writing, exercises, and shared stories. We also incorporated physical education into the bridge program. So classrooms had the opportunity to participate weekly in physical education classes. During scheduled times in the gym, students took part in structured games and learning activities that promoted teamwork and collaboration. And we also really took advantage of the outdoor activities that Beechwood Knoll has to offer. So we used the outdoor classroom and the spaces around Beechwood Knoll. So and we worked on team building and exploratory lessons. Classes completed nature walks and scavenger hunts while learning about elements of the ecosystem and looking for 3D shapes. So all in all, a fun summer over at Beechwood Knoll. We also had a program running at Snug Harbor for our Snug Harbor students. And this program serviced 60 students. And for this program, it was based on weekly themes. So the themes included All-American Week, Around the World Week, Under the Sea, and Outer Space Week. And some of the projects that the students completed were things like building rollercoasters, tunnels, egg drop containers, and bridges. They also had a lot of fun too. They were able to travel to the Lincoln Hancock Pool twice a week and gain access to water safety and water awareness this summer. And we do just want to thank Granite Telecommunications because they also sponsored a visit for us Snug Harbor students to the Boston Children's Museum. And now I will turn it over to Mr. Marani.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Before I begin, I just want to acknowledge how grateful I am to be here as a curriculum director. Recently took this role in July. Honored to be here. And I just want to thank everybody behind me for their support as I transitioned into this, into this role and of course, everybody here. So thank you. With middle school, the engagement continues on much like it did at the elementary level. The first program I'd like to highlight is the Summer Boost Program. We had 105 students participate. This took place at Central Middle School. The Summer Boost Program focused on the core academics, English Language Arts, reading, math, science, but it also incorporated Spanish and it also incorporated social emotional learning classes as well. So this was for all participants. At ELA, they trace arguments and texts. They found the pros and cons in topics of high interest for them that they chose. And one thing that I found impressive within the ELA subject areas, they learned to both academically and most importantly, respectfully debate with one another about these topics of interest, which is clearly an important skill that we teach our students. Science, there was a lab activity each day. They learned about physical and chemical changes and created elephant toothpaste. I did have to Google search that. I wasn't 100% sure what that was, but I encourage you to Google it on your own time. It looks a little too messy for me, but I'm sure the kids enjoyed it. And they also studied the engineering design process by creating bridges and towers. For math, students connected math concepts with real life. So looking at the stock market, practiced calculations in budgeting, and looked at how math can be integrated into other subjects such as art and many others. Social studies, they continued to reinforce their geography skills by identifying longitude and latitude and identifying specific countries and cities with those points. And also being able, they challenged one another to identify the, every state in the U.S. by looking at a blank map there. So great skills throughout and a lot more Spanish. There was, you know, in addition to basic conversational Spanish language, they also learned Hispanic culture and so exposed themselves beyond their own culture, many of them. And of course, SEL, they learned about the importance of time management, developing study skills, goal setting, identifying and articulating their feelings, and then also how to overcome challenges in a productive way and in a respectful way with one another. So again, this was our Summer Boost Program, clearly a very productive program. Also at Central, 65 students got to participate in our Hands-on Math Program. As a former algebra teacher, this is near and dear to my heart as a program. Once middle school students start to get deep into those algebraic concepts, those topics become very abstract. So it is our job as educators to try and expose them to as much concrete thinking as they can within those abstract concepts. It's very hard to do as you move forward into more in-depth math. They used a multi-sensory, excuse me, a multi-sensory program called Hands-on Equations. And so it's focused on teaching students how to balance equations and how to solve for solutions using manipulatives and then eventually going from concrete to pictorial to abstract, building those skill sets. All remedial support and also support to help them prepare for the upcoming year as well. Again, that was Hands-on Math. STEM Academy, 58 students. This was broken up into two sessions. So there was one session, I believe it was four days, Monday through Thursday, and then a second session of different kids the following week. But throughout that, students participated in small group activities throughout the week. They built balloon rockets. They used multiple designs to do this. They also competed in rocket races. They created bridges out of sticks and spaghetti. They tested their designs using various weights. And then they ended the session. So each session, the first and second, ended with an egg drop challenge where they're similar to the elementary, I believe it was at Snug or one of the elementary programs where they're building containers, dropping them two stories, and seeing if they can save that egg from cracking as it lands. It's a great, great experiment. It's a great process for those kiddos. And then they also explored chemistry in terms of making ice cream and learning about the freezing point and the different states of matter. The last middle school program that I'd like to highlight is the Quincy Summer Theater Arts Academy. This is a very impressive program. 27 students. What I found unique about this program is it wasn't just students pursuing acting. It was really about putting on a production and all the work that goes into it in terms of not just writing the script, modifying the music, writing the music, building the sets, doing all of those things. That was all student-based. So the experience for those kids was more than, more than acting, more than drama. It was that and more. I would say the most important theme that I got throughout all of this is teamwork. These students practiced their teamwork as they wrote and produced their own performance. And that's how they ended their academy on the 4th, their final day. They got to perform for family and friends a musical that they wrote. Shifting gears a little bit to high school, the Summer Pathways to Success, also known as the Credit Recovery Program. We had 142 students participate in this program. It was held at Quincy High School. A couple items I'd like to highlight. This was for our core academics, so English, social studies, mathematics, and/or science. Students were able to enroll in up to two. They could enroll in one. All said and done, 121 courses were recovered. All said and done, 121 courses were recovered across the students who participated. So those are students who were able to gain back credits that they might have struggled to pursue prior to that. So to me, that's a tremendous accomplishment that these students were able to take advantage of that summertime and inch their way further in the right direction. So we're very proud of those students and of course grateful to all the teachers and the facilitators of all the programs I mentioned. I'll hand it off to Keith Sagala, who will talk to you about the Ladders to Success.
Thank you, Mr. Marani, and good evening, everyone. Quincy's Ladder Success Program assisted eligible grade nine, incoming grade nine students transition to high school while learning valuable life skills including financial literacy, technology, employability, entrepreneurship, and health and wellness, as well as immersing them into various career explorations. In addition, LTS students had the opportunity to tour each high school and meet various high school personnel, including principals, deans, guidance counselors, and the athletic director this summer in preparation for a seamless transition this fall. 36 students participated, 30 of whom were eligible incoming ninth graders, and six peer leaders who were grade 12 students both from Quincy and North Quincy High School. This program was held at Quincy High School. This also was a grant funded by the Mass Higher Social Workforce Board in the amount of $84,200. Students had the opportunity to work 110 hours at the hourly rate of 15, earning up to $1,600 per person. QPS Summer Youth Works, students who participated in this year's program held various jobs, various diverse jobs in the industries such as healthcare, education, business and retail, and hospitality. Students also gained valuable experience in STEM and the arts while working in public, private, and nonprofit organizations across the city. 115 QPS students participated in the program from grades nine through 12. 28 community business partners participated, and we're very grateful. 80 of the 115 students received CPR training and are now certified in CPR. 22 of those QPS students participated in Summer Youth Works Institute. They took advantage of attending Quincy College, earning six college credits and also working part-time, so give those 22 students a lot of credit. Students had the opportunity to work 210 total hours at $17 per hour, earning a little over $3,500 bucks. This was also a grant by Mass Higher Social Workforce Board in the amount of $415,000. And I would like to take a special thanks to Allison Cox and the QPS Human Resources Team, Angela, Kathy, and Emily for their assistance with the paperwork and the onboarding. Can imagine 151 students from Youth Works as well as Ladder Success, so thank you, HR. This next slide includes our community business partners that participated in our Youth Works. I recall that Mr. Bergoli in the spring asked who the partners participating, and I was able to ramble four or five, but there's actually 28. And so we're very proud of those business partners for providing students real-life, real-world experiences for our kids and the opportunities. Early College High School Pathway Summer Academy. This was an opportunity for our students to earn additional college credit during summer months. 152 QPS students completed Summer Academy. 134 of those students were incoming grades 10, 11, and 12. 18 were recent graduates. 63 of those students were early college students, and 89 were non-early college students. And 76, 50% of those students took two courses, earning up to six or seven credits this summer. Incentives include free tuition and fees, free textbooks and materials, MBTA Charlie Cards, as well as complimentary snacks. The program was held at Quincy College, just a wonderful, wonderful experience, and we want to say thank you to our special partner Quincy College for all they do for our students. This also was a grant by the Massachusetts Department of Education through the MassDZ Early College High School Program in the amount of $257,000.
So our next program that we wanted to just highlight is our program for students with disabilities, and so we had our Cares and Learning Center program at ECC in kindergarten program. This served just approximately 85 students, and students had a lot of fun in addition to working on their individual goals and benchmarks. They worked on communication skills and foundational skills in both reading and math, and they had weekly visits, including a puppet show, Joe's Crazy Critters, Sing, Explore, Create, and the Quincy Fire Department, all visited the program over at Delakiza. We also had our other Cares and Learning Center program, which was located at Southwest Middle School this year, again focused on students' individual goals and objectives within their IEPs. This serviced 190 students, so it was a very big program, and they also were able to do some weekly activities, so they had a Weekly Themed Wednesday, a different theme every single week, where kids dressed up according to the individual themes. They also had visitors and some field trips. They had Sing, Explore, Create come. They went bowling. They had a touch-a-truck activity at the end of the program, and we want to thank the Quincy Police Department and all of the other, you know, the Fire Department, Brewster Ambulance, all of the people that brought their trucks to the touch-a-truck activity, and they also had an ice cream party. We had another program running over at Clifford Marshall. This program, the Language Development Classroom and the Stars Classroom have been in existence, but the Transitional Kindergarten Program is actually new that we offered this summer. These were five-week programs, so they went a week longer than the rest of the Bridge program, and again, working on students' individual IEPs and goals and benchmarks. There were 60 students that participated in this program, and similar to the Bridge program, they had a visit from Wally and Tess and the WBZ News Meteorologist, and they also received lessons in bike safety from Vivian from Bike Safety. I wanted to highlight this program, our Camp Can Do, which was also located at Clifford Marshall. This program, our elementary program, serviced 101 students this summer. So initially, this program started before COVID with one classroom for Clifford Marshall students that were beginners in terms of EL. It then expanded during COVID to grades one and two, and this year, for the first time, we were able to expand it district-wide for students in grades one to five. It was for beginners, and we had nine classrooms. It's very, very impressive, and the students had a great time. They worked on communication with their friends. They, you know, did scientific experiments about fruits and vegetables, dissecting radishes, potatoes, tomatoes, celery, and cucumbers to determine whether they were really fruits or vegetables. They created monsters for descriptive writing, and they played some fun games. I also just want to thank, too, the family liaisons for Camp Can Do because our family liaisons worked this program because these were our beginner EL students, some of them brand-new to Quincy Public Schools, and so the family liaisons actually translated for the students and the families so that they could access the program. So I really need to give them a big thank you because they were instrumental to the success of this program. And we had our SWEL program, which also has expanded significantly. There were 64 students who participated in this program in six classrooms that were at Central Middle School. For this program, students broaden their horizon on the city of Quincy's rich history and land and the people through field studies. The students had an amazing time. They did all kinds of really fun stuff. They met with Representative Taki Chan and Senator John F. Keenan at the State House. They did some water testing activities at Nut Island. They visited Mayor Koch, thank you very much, Mayor Koch, at the City Council Chamber, and they also got to speak with Abigail Adams at Peace Field, who was actually played by one of our teachers, our social studies teachers. So just finally, as I said, we are so fortunate in this city that we have an unbelievable summer program. There is not a district around that offers this kind of programming to their students over the summer, and especially, it is free. So that is really, really, really impressive and something that we certainly are very proud of, and you know, we want to thank all of you. Thank you, Mayor Koch. Thank you, members of the school committee. You've supported this program year in and year out, which makes it possible for us to reach as many children as we can over the summer months, and so we just want to really thank you because it's amazing. It's something the city should be so proud of, and like I said, it is something that's very unique to Quincy. I also just want to thank the facilitators because this is so much work at the end of the school year when people are trying to, you know, close up their classrooms, do all their end-of-the-year assessments. There's so many things that go into it, and we were so fortunate. We had amazing facilitators this summer. So Kim Quinn and Justine Sullivan facilitated the Bridge to Reading and Math program. Donna Niosi facilitated the Language Development Class Transitional Kindergarten and the Stars Classroom over at Clifford Marshall. Megan Healy and Laurel Hendrickson facilitated the Quest program. Tracy Phalen and Danielle Perry were working in the Learning Center and Cares programs. Marissa Smith facilitated the Early College High School program with Joanna Compatello, who I think is further down the list. Patrick Lane, he facilitated the Credit Recovery Program, and I do need, I know Mike mentioned it, but that program, we completely revamped it this year, and it was amazing. The kids did so great. It was over at Quincy High School. It really was impressive to see the amount of work that went into that program and the amount of children that they were able to help recover credits. Michelle Coniff and Nancy Seriani did the Summer Boost for the middle school students, and Tao Ippolito ran the SWEL program, Diane Babcock, Snug Harbor. Christopher Benson ran the Youth Works, and Natalie Valente also the Youth Works, Ladders to Success. So I just want to give a special thanks. I also just wanted, the theater program was brand-new this year as well, another huge success. Tom Dusette, Joanna Compatello doing double duty, and Christopher Bowle, who made that all possible. So thank you to all of the staff and students as well. We could not do this, obviously, without our students and our staff. We had so many teachers, way too many to list, but we thank them, and we really had a very fun and productive summer this summer at Summer Scene. Superintendent?
Again, I just also want to highlight another program that we had during the summertime. Thanks to the Quincy Police Department, Chief Kennedy, Officer Ryan Donnelly, and Officer Greg Hartnett with the funding from the mayor's office, and of course, the approval of the school committee, the Quincy Police Department Youth Academy. We had 50 students participate in this academy focused on everything from criminal justice, education for our students, to day trips out on the police boat and other fun activities. Again, 50 students, it was seventh-grade students, 10 from each middle school, and the students had a fantastic time, and they all successfully graduated the Quincy Police Youth Summer Academy. So thank you to the Quincy Police, to Chief Kennedy, Officer Donnelly, and Officer Hartnett, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Committee, Mr. Gattuso.
First, a big welcome to Mr. Marani. Big school committee welcome. Good to have you here. Big shoes to fill.
Absolutely.
So Erin, in the post-COVID world, summer programming has just exploded. Is that accurate?
Oh, yes, definitely.
I mean, where were the numbers pre-COVID? I mean, I know that we got a ton of federal money, and summer programming was really the bridge to help get our students back on track. Do you remember where the numbers were, say, five years ago?
They were significantly less, so we pretty much had our special education programs, which were much smaller. I mean, we didn't even include the students that got individual tutoring or speech therapy or, you know, PT or OT over the summer in our numbers, you know, so there's those students as well. But we had our special education programs previously, so our Little One Learning Center and Cares program over at Delakiza and our middle and high school Learning Center and Cares program, the Bridge to Reading. We probably had about a 50-person math program, you know, before COVID, and then the Credit Recovery, and that was really it. And SWEL, yes, we had SWEL. And obviously Camp Can Do, it was one classroom, so it was significantly less. I would say it was probably maybe around at most 500 students.
And how many new programs? I mean, we're up to 20 programs.
We have a ton of new programs. I mean, the theater, and we keep adding, so we're really fortunate. So we, you know, we've learned a lot. That first year that we did this during COVID, when we did the virtual, it was really crazy, but we did it, and we were trying to offer something for everyone because not all of our kids that want to participate in the summer program need, you know, necessarily academic support over the summer, so we wanted to make sure we offered opportunities for enrichment, for advancement, for acceleration, like considering for creativity, you know, considering all different types of learners. And so that, you know, that was kind of our goal over the COVID summer, and so then from there, we fine-tuned. So for instance, the Quest program, when we first did it, it was all individual programs, and then we were like, this isn't working. So we combined it into one program, but it's one program that offers social studies, science, art, physical education, so there's something for everyone in that program, reading, math, engineering, so that, you know, those are the things. We added the theater program this year. We added additional classrooms for the SWEL program. I know Mr. Sagala's programs have grown tremendously, our ability, I mean, that's an unbelievable program, the ability to pay, and a lot of times, it's our most vulnerable children that get to, you know, that work in those programs and that have that opportunity to make some money over the summer and get a great experience as well, so it's really, it really is. It's grown, it's just amazing. It's grown huge.
So the planning time for June 21st start goes way back to when?
Oh, we start like January, February. We start talking and, you know, getting our dates together. When are we gonna, you know, we need to, and we've gotten better every year. So, you know, the signups, we've smoothed the signups out significantly, you know, when are we gonna release the signups? When are we, you know, when are we gonna post? When are we, you know, for staff, you know, all those things, we've really tightened up. So this past summer, I would say, even though it was a massive program, because we've learned from the past few years, we really kind of have it down to a science.
So one comment and then one question. So to quote Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come? You know, I mean, it sounds like you've built some pretty impressive programming, and the numbers just blew through the roof here, which is incredible. I mean, just incredible, the numbers that, 1,700, 1,700 is staggering. Super impressive, and now comes the hard question, which might be a subsequent question with Mr. Mulaney, is the funding streams, you know, I mean, there were a litany of funding streams that came out of COVID. Which ones might dry up before next summer as you plan, and are any consequential enough and the gaps?
I think that we're planning for next summer, right? Where is he?
Estelle will carry through to September of next year.
September next year.
Will we have funding for the summer programs?
Excellent news. Thank you, Mr. Mulaney. Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you for the great work. It is impressive, Roman. I just have a question to clarify. So is everybody that signs up, do they get in? Are there limits? Anybody not get in or?
Well, we close the registration at a certain point because we need to be able to establish like numbers and things like that, but as long as you register before that deadline, you will get in. And we, in fact, had children from other districts that were trying to register this year that we weeded out, so, but you know, it is, it's really, it's an impressive program. It attracts people apparently from other cities and towns.
Good work. Thank you.
This is Julie.
Thank you. So did you do any kind of an after review with the teachers and facilitators that worked on this to see what they thought was good, not so good, wanted to change? And also, did you do a survey with the parents to see how their feelings were on the programs at all?
We have not done a survey with the parents. We definitely talked, you know, talked to the staff. We collect information for the newsletter for the staff as well, so the facilitators do a nice job of that, and we certainly reflect with the facilitators, but we could definitely do a survey to the families, absolutely. I mean, we have all of their contact information, so that would be, you know, a pretty easy thing to do, you know, for the fall to kind of consider as we move, you know, eventually we'll be in January and February again, and are planning for the next summer.
Thank you. And also to the superintendent, when we had the Quincy Police Youth Summer Academy, did the DARE, did they run as well, or did this take place sort of of the DARE program?
That was a separate program from DARE, so DARE also ran as well. That was a separate program from DARE, so DARE also ran as well, did their own programming. This was a specially funded special program for seventh grade middle school students, and again, 10 from each school, so 50 total students.
Okay, wonderful to hear. I'm a big fan of the DARE program. Thank you.
This is Lebo.
This is really impressive. It's so great to hear, it sounds like fun and learning was happening. So, I'm really, really impressed, the number of kids, but I also want to give a shout-out to the Recreation Department for some of the incredible things they offered our kids this summer also. You know, just seeing some of the stuff in the newspaper and the sun, like the golf thing, it's just great to see that kind of stuff going on. So, I think we're a pretty special city.
We are.
And we really do take care of our kids, so I'm just happy to be here.
Thank you. Mr. Bragoli.
I'd like to echo some of my colleagues' statements. What we provide for our children in the summer and throughout the school year is incredible. The offerings that we give them is beyond anything I was ever exposed to when I was a kid, because that was years ago, but it's just, it's impressive. The amount of work that goes into this, first of all, and the way, the programming, the way it comes out is incredible. And we touch so many kids, again, through Recreation and the Ropes Program, and then what we do here in the summer program, so it's great to be a part of it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Item B, School Program Improvement Plan. Ms. Perkins and Mr. Marani.
Okay. So, we'll switch gears a little bit to this year. And so, we just wanted to, before, you know, the principals are off and running, you know, and the staff is off and running in their schools, and they're, you know, getting ready to have their first assessment days, you know, early in October. The state data will be released at the end of this week. Right now, it's embargoed, but it will be being released soon. And so, as we, you know, move forward, and we get ready for our school improvement plans and our program improvement plans, we definitely heard from the committee that, you know, there were, you know, some changes that you wanted to see happen. And so, what we would like to do tonight is to, before our principals start working on them, and our directors and coordinators, just review the process, review what's required, and discuss with you what you'd like to see done differently, so that we can make sure we then relay that to our principals, directors, and coordinators. So, I just wanted to just quickly review with you what is required by law for a school improvement plan. So, a school, and I'm also going to just talk about where you would find that in our current school improvement plan. So, required by law is an assessment of the impact of class size on student performance, student-to-teacher ratios, and ratios of students to other supportive adult resources. And so, typically, we do have school demographics in our school improvement plans, including class size, and we also have staffing and support services within our school improvement plans. Another required item is a scheduled plan for reducing class size if necessary. This is really not a concern in Quincy. You know, I think through the funding that we receive from the mayor and from the school committee, we are able to have really phenomenal class size numbers, so this is not something typically that we need to do. Professional development for the school staff and allocation of any professional development funds in the school budget. Typically, the professional development funds come through the district and not through the individual school budgets, but they do, in the school improvement plan, include a professional development plan within their actual plan. You also need to include the enhancement of parental involvement in the life of the school, and we do include a chart that includes all of the family engagement and communication that our principals, you know, do with our families. We have also, another required component is the school safety and discipline. We do include this in the school demographics. We have the school safety and discipline report data that we include within the plans. And then, we also include the vocal survey results, which are the views of climate and learning, which we did a presentation on last year. Additional required components are an establishment of a school environment characterized by tolerance and respect for all groups. And so, I think our principals do a really nice job of weaving this into their principal's message, their reflection on their vocal data, and, you know, in their discussions in terms of, you know, what they need to focus on within their wellness goal, and their social-emotional goals, and then also any narrative elements that they include within the plan. Extracurricular activities is another required element, and we do have a listing, our principals have a list, all of the extended-day activities that are available within the school. And then, means for meeting within the regular education programs at the school, the diverse learning needs of as many children as possible, including children with special needs currently assigned to separate programs. And so, again, our principals do, we have goals and action steps, which talk about how we're addressing all of the students in our buildings, and they also do a reflection, a data reflection on, you know, they talk about subgroups and different, you know, areas or strands where students might be struggling, that they want to target through their action steps and goals. And then, any other further subjects the principal and consultation with the school council shall consider appropriate. So, for us, we do have some additional items. In our plan, we have school demographics, we have the facilities section, we have a budget, and then we have an appendix. So, just to remind you just what our current format looks like for our school improvements, our school improvement plans. It starts with our principal's path, which is typically a narrative, and that is a data reflection, typically on MCAS and MAP scores and vocal scores. And then, a goals reflection, which is how they, what the goals were last year, and how they did, how they performed on those goals last year, and whether or not they'll be continuing any of those items, or moving on to new items. We have the main bulk of the school improvement plan, which is the goal statements and action steps. And typically, our plans are, they focus on English Language Arts is one goal, mathematics is another goal, science, technology, and engineering is a third goal, and then there's typically a social-emotional learning goal, which is the fourth goal. We also include a professional development plan in each plan. We include a chart with extended-day activities. We include a chart that has family engagement and communication. We include our school demographics, facilities, and budget. And then, we have an appendix. This is just a sample from the appendix from last year. So, we had our spring data, our MAP RIT scores, we had the spring vocal data was in there. We typically include any accountability information, like chronic absenteeism. We include our staffing, school council members, and then the open, we had, last year, we had an open parachute timeline to make sure that our schools were implementing that new curricula. Now, I will turn it over to Mr. Marani.
Thank you. So, you know, as we look at the required components, and we look at the current format, as we assess how we want to move forward with these SIPs for this upcoming school year, it makes sense to look at the goals initially, to look at opportunities for principals and their staff to individualize what those goals might look like from SIP to SIP to SIP across the different schools. So, the first is just a basic comparison of a math goal. And so, when you look at Goal Example 1, you'll see that it targets students in grades 6 through 8. It's focused on math in general, so as opposed to going into a specific standard, it's a broader goal. And we're looking at RIT, which means we're using our MAP assessment as a potential metric, okay? So, an increase of six RIT points, and then, of course, we specify the specific report that we use to ensure that we met or understand the status of the goal. So, that's one version of that, and that could represent one school, while another school, depending on their unique needs and what they might need to focus on for the upcoming school year, you could see a version of that, again, focused on students in grades 6 through 8. However, you could see a school potentially targeting one specific standard, so Math Operation and Algebraic Thinking, also known as OA Standards. And so, you could see where now we're looking specifically at a standard within mathematics. So, we've just, there's a comparison there, or I should say that, you know, we're seeing a difference there. We're looking also at a different assessment. So, rather than our MAP assessment that we looked at in Example 1, we're looking at MCAS as our assessment for Goal 2, and specifically, we're looking at the change in the percentage points per OA test item. So, these are two examples. There's a variety of goals, but the reason why I bring these up is because it's important to really compare these goals, and then identify the core components of these goals, to look for opportunities for these principals to individualize as they work with their staff members. So, that's an academic goal comparison. Just to also do one more comparison before we talk about the specific components, if we look at an SEL goal comparison, you'll see here that they're set up similarly, they're looking at some sort of core focus. So, for example, in Goal Example 1, they hope to enhance the understanding of, the student understanding of diversity, equity, and inclusion through community-building activities, right? So, the idea is, let's create these activities, let's create these opportunities for these students to develop their understanding and enhance their understanding of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And to assess that, the measurable component there, is to look at the completing or the implementation of four lessons, in this case, through the Open Parachute Program. Again, one example, only to emphasize kind of the potential difference when you're looking from goal to goal across different schools. Another example is, again, a focus on sense of connectedness, excuse me, connectedness and belonging, along with the ability to identify nurturing relationships. And now, the metric here, instead of the implementation of Open Parachute, it focuses more on the vocal survey questions, and they're specified questions. So, in this case, the metric here is, you know, we hope 80% of students surveyed respond with agree or strongly agree within targeted vocal survey questions. So, you can compare how they went from year to year, or you can just look at the results for that current year. So, in this case, 80%. So, the reason why I bring these up as we move on is really to break down the parts of a goal that a principal and his or her team have to adjust and make it their own, to represent their student body needs and their staffing needs. So, it really kind of breaks up into three components, the assessments that are being used, the metrics within those assessments, and then also the targeting. So, that could be the standards, as you saw in one example. That could be grade level, doesn't necessarily need to be all 6, 7, and 8, could be one grade level, and then also subgroups. So, obviously, these are all data-driven decisions based on the data derived from the school results. But when you look at that, you can use different metrics to identify, again, the status of those goals. And that could be achievement category percentage, average percent correct, so those are two MCAS metrics, also average RIT score, average growth percentile. Now, those are, for example, there's many, many more. The list goes on for quite a while. Some of the assessments, MCAS and MAP are the most common. However, there's access, there's M-class, there's vocal survey data, and there's other opportunities as well. So, those are goal statement components. So, just within the goals, there's opportunity for each school to individualize what that looks like. And then, when you shift gears a little bit, and just look for additional opportunities to individualize, so you could look at the overall SIP structure. So, you know, we went over the current format. We could reassess what we want that format to look like, obviously, that's up to the school committee. Goal adjustments, so whether or not we want to reduce the amount of goals, making that an individualized decision versus, you know, four goals across the district. Prioritizing, so maybe it's the same amount of goals, but one or two are highlighted as priorities. And also, topic modification, maybe, you know, depending on data, maybe a math goal for that year isn't the focus for that particular year. Doesn't mean it's being ignored, it just means it might not be included in the SIP as its own goal. Again, these are all ideas, food for thought among everybody here. And again, removal modifications of the non-required components. Obviously, the required components of the SIP, we have to include, but as you saw, we have quite a bit extra, so also opportunity there. And then, just the presentation format changes that principals give to school committees. So, all opportunities that we can look at and discuss further as to whether or not we want to modify or update in some way to help schools individualize their SIPs. Aaron?
And so, just really quickly, while we're talking about school improvement plans, there's also the program improvement plans, which are similar to the school improvement plans. Those, you know, I do think that those are maybe a little more differentiated based on the program needs, and, you know, it may be the, your concern with the school improvement plans kind of all looking the same is maybe not the case necessarily with the program improvement plans, just by the nature of the programs. But there is, they typically have a mission statement, they have a director's message, they have their alignment to the district improvement plan, the team organizational chart alignment, they typically reflect on their goals, they do new goals and action steps, any related professional development, the membership within their teams and meeting dates, their staffing, and then an appendix. And so, what we did here, kind of loud and clear, was the PIP presentations. We maybe, you know, want to take a look at those and change those a little bit. So, the SIP presentation typically occurs at Teaching and Learning Subcommittee. Principals, usually, you, at that point, you've had the school improvement plan, you all read the school improvement plan, and then the principals just kind of present their highlights. It's, they don't do a presentation like this, they typically do it pretty informally with kind of their notes, and they go through them. The PIP presentations are a little bit different. They occur during typically school committee meetings, sometimes in subcommittee, but typically during school committee meetings. They typically are a slideshow presentation, and I know that not, sometimes they follow the plan that they have presented, but sometimes they highlight various topics that are included within the program improvement plan, and, you know, maybe the presentation doesn't always exactly match the program improvement plan, because they're focusing on like one particular item, or two particular items within the plan. And so, you know, we just wanted to take this time to be able to talk with you, those are kind of our thoughts on, you know, some ways that we could potentially differentiate the SIPs. We'd certainly like to hear your feedback and what you'd like to see as we move forward to work with our principals.
Anybody on this side? Mrs. Lebo.
I'd be happy to start. I've got a couple of things. Thank you very much for this. I'm not concerned about the format at all. I appreciate the format, the beginning of the thing. I think on the goal statements and action steps is where I start to have some problems. And my, some of my problems are that everybody, they might choose a different metric to look at, but everybody is basically doing the same thing, and sometimes we need to. I mean, sometimes like fifth grade math is a problem, or sixth grade math is a problem district-wide, and we really need to address that. But I think each school has different student support needs, and I'm not seeing those. And I think, I think I'd like to see more of that, that there's schools being allowed to talk about what they need, so that we can find a way to give it to them if they need something they're not getting. So, I would like to see something like that. I don't know what, I don't want to know that I want it to be called student support, but whatever. You know what I mean? Do you know what I'm talking about? Have it?
No. I'm sorry.
So, I think different schools have different personalities.
Okay.
And they have different populations, and they have different needs. And that's all I would like to make sure that.
Within the goal statement is?
I would like, if schools feel they need that, I would like that to be in there. So, and I don't know what the metric would be for that, but it might be discipline, it might be absenteeism, it might be something that shows that there's some snags going on.
I see what you're saying.
Not the school's fault, but, you know, maybe more support of some sort would help.
Okay.
My other big thing is like, the MCAS is such a difficult metric, because it's not actionable. You know, I mean, I love the MAP assessment, and I know we have to talk about the MCAS, but talking about what's going to happen with next year's fifth graders with totally different kids is a little, it's just, I feel like we're making them do work that's not really going to be, not that they're not going to do the work, but that we're making them do the work to present to us, because they think they have to present it to us.
Right.
That's what sometimes it feels like to me. And my other thing is, and this is my biggest thing, Ms. Perkins, Mr. Marani, we get the school improvement plans, and we read them, and we write notes all over them. And then, we get a presentation, and it's a PowerPoint, and it doesn't reflect back on any, and we're all flipping through our pages, trying to find out where it was. So, it's very difficult to. So it's very difficult to not have the PowerPoint or not have the PowerPoint reference, the pages on the school improvement plan, because I've read every one of those plans and I have notes all over it, and I don't want the whole thing presented to me. I don't, I really don't. But I do have, find I need a way to see when they're talking about something. Does anybody else know what I mean? This happens to us a lot, not just with the school improvement plans, but we get this a lot. We'll get something to read, we'll read it, and then a whole different format comes out as when we get to the meeting, and we can't even figure out what we're trying to say. So I don't, I'm not sure how to fix that.
I mean, I think we could fix that. I think we can make sure that.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I definitely understand.
It's very difficult for us sometimes.
Nope, I definitely understand. Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
And I don't want the whole plan presented.
Okay.
I've read it.
You got it.
So that's my comment for now.
Mr. Pagoli.
I agree with Ms. Lebo about the math assessments. I think our MAP testing is much more valuable for us and for teachers in terms of evaluating the students and their progress throughout the year as opposed to MCAS, which is something we have to wait for, for almost a whole year before we get any information. And by that time, that class is gone.
Right.
And then we have to compare what we have for data from that fourth grade class to the fifth grade class that's going to be taking it the next year, which is going to take another year. So it's, I think the MAP is far more valuable for us as a committee and for our teachers to evaluate their kids. So that's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, we love it, too.
Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. Mrs. Lebo and I have talked about this many times, so I agree with everything that she's saying. The other thing I was going to suggest is, so, another thing the principals don't do is they don't brag. I go out to the schools and I'll be there, and they'll be having like a really special geography bee or something, and then I'll go in the presentation and it's not in there. And I'll be like, you've done this every year, how come you didn't put it in there? And they're like, oh, well, we just didn't put, I'm like, this is a great thing that your school does, you know? Brag about it, put it in there, put everything in there so that we know what you're doing so one of us might not go for the geography bee and might not know that you're doing it. So put everything in there that you're doing. And like, another thing is when they have like current extracurricular activities. I've noticed some years they'll only put what they're doing right now, and they won't put in what they're doing at the end of the year. So it's like, put it all in there, show us everything that you're doing, because like Mrs. Lebo said, we are reading the whole thing, and I'll notice if it's not in there. Because I know that if I go out to the school and I know I saw something really awesome and it's not in there. I'm going to say something. So that's my.
Absolutely, you can do that. Yeah. Thank you.
Mrs. Cahill.
Hi, thank you. Just a couple of questions. The, I think you answered one. Any of the goals that were from the prior year, would they carry them over to the next year if it's relevant? You know, does that typically happen or?
It can happen, definitely in program improvement plans sometimes if they haven't met the goal or they've partially met the goal, they may carry it over. It does happen sometimes in school improvement plans as well, you know, but, you know, a lot of times it is based, like if you're looking at math or reading, it's based on a new crop of kids, you know, a lot of times. So it's usually a very similar goal. I think what, what Mr. Mariani and I would like to see is for them to really own their data, really take a look at their own data, and, you know, maybe it is subgroups that they need to focus on, or maybe it's, you know, something different. Maybe it's an individual strand that they've noticed historically has been a lower strand for them and like really individualize their goal. I think they've been so used to kind of the district format of the goal, we're just, we're trying to break them off it.
Yeah, like you said, so take the goals that you have, look at how they, how they did that year, and then refine them for, as you go, based on, like you said, population and stuff like that. My question, I don't know if this is in a school improvement plan or where you would report on this, and we talked a little bit about, we do the class sizes and what the class sizes are in each schools, in the classrooms and everything. Do we have someplace where we report on specialists and their caseloads, what the numbers are like during the year? And also, maybe if each school has specialists coming in and what the numbers are in different schools. So we know, again, it gives us an idea of what the needs are in those, in those schools in terms of specialists. And also, you know, I think there are some state requirements as to what the numbers are so that we're sure that we're staying within that, that, you know, those numbers. So that's one thing, and I don't know where you would report that, but if it would be in the school.
We could add that with the class sizes, that's a great suggestion, yeah.
And my other question, and I think, you know, my colleagues talked about this in the past, when we talk about the incident reports and discipline reports, the consistency of the reports across all the schools so that we know we're looking at the same kind of numbers, you know, the same kind of incidents, or however you report in one school that it's the same across the board, so that we aren't, you know, saying, oh, this school's doing great, that one's not, but in actuality, they're, they're really doing the same. So that might be something that we look at, too.
Yeah.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Catrow.
Thank you. First of all, whoever's idea was to have this discussion at the first meeting deserves a thank you. So this is super helpful. I don't remember us doing that before. I just remember us having all the meeting schedules, the school improvement plans, we get them, we have to read 18 of them. So this is super helpful to have this discussion, so thank you. I'm going to give Mr. Mariani credit for that because he's new, but.
I'll take it.
So to have a number of questions and comments. First one is parental input, which I ask all the principals that come before us. So if you were to go before any board or commissioner, so we're casting a vote accepting the school improvement plan, right? So if you go before any board or commission in the city of Quincy that casts a vote, like a zoning board or a planning board, the first thing they ask about is neighborhood input. What's the neighborhood input? So I would like to know, and oftentimes principals will come before us and say that they will solicit input, or they had a PTO meeting or whatever the case may be. I would like to know that there was parental engagement, you know, I don't know, on the website, they post on the website, they ask for feedback, they do a PTO meeting, whatever it is, that there is a more robust solicitation of parent input before it comes before us so that they can say, the voices of the parents shaped it in this way. And I know it's tough, the timeline is tough in getting it to us in a timely manner, but to me, that's meaningful, just to hear that they've socialized it with the parents and they've got some of the input on that is useful when they come before us. The second is the building needs portion of it. It would be useful to, and, you know, I could, we could all pull out our 18 SIPs and bring them in and all that, but it would be useful to have a side-by-side on that. This is what was there last year, this is what's here this year, and we can, from that, at least deduce what's come off, what's been taken care of. It'd be super helpful so that we don't have to go back and pull that out every time. The third, the third is the goals, and there was some discussion about the goals. And again, this is, so we don't have to research everyone before we come in. It'd be useful, I think, at least from my vantage point, here's what's new, here's what's dropped, here's what we're continuing, you know, on goals from the previous SIP. Because we've gone through all of that, so it'd be useful to walk through that, and I know that in some cases, there's new principles for that. And that would probably, if they did that, that would obviate the need which I was going to ask for, which was a paragraph about how they met the last goals. And I know that that happens sometimes in the principal's path. A path, of course, is usually a path forward, not a path back, but some of it's retrospective, some of it's prospective in the principal's path, so you can't really tell. So I'm just looking for a comparison, last year's goals. What's modified, what's dropped?
Yep.
What's new? And then, is there a place, like an intranet site, or I suppose it would be on the internet site, or an opportunity where principals look at other principals' SIPs?
Yeah, we actually have them in Google. We have a Google Drive that we create that has all of the SIPs while they're in draft form.
And is there like a time when all the principals get together at certain grade levels where they talk about, talk about them and they say, oh, what do you do? You know, how do you structure it? What are your?
I think they do that internally. I think Mr. Mariani can speak to that. I know, I'm pretty sure they do it internally, but we haven't, we don't do any, we haven't done anything formal, but that's definitely a good suggestion. We could absolutely do that.
Yeah, I think that would be useful. And then, on the PIPs, similar thoughts, you know, what's changed, what's dropped, you know, and then get into continuation, that would be useful to me. So, overall, thank you for doing this right out of the box and getting our input. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Amy.
I have two concerns.
Hold on one second. I think I have all the mics on. Is there a switch?
There is a switch.
Okay.
It's on, yep.
So my first one is that you said that class sizes aren't typically a concern in Quincy. In my personal experience, I've experienced classes that are literally on their, like at capacity, and then I've had friends who have tried to drop from Advanced to Honors, and they haven't been able to do so because Honors is full, but they don't want to drop to CCP, so they're stuck in an Advanced class that they can't keep up in, but they can't drop. So I don't know how you'd solve that, and I know like the plan's already in place, but I wanted to voice that. I don't, it might not be a concern at elementary or middle schools, but at the high school level.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great suggestion, Amy, and I definitely think that we can have the highs, I think it is, I think you're right, I think it absolutely is more of a concern at the high school than typically elementary or middle. And I think that we could absolutely have the principals include how they handle that situation when students need, when students need to shift, you know, in their classes when, I know North Quincy High is, it's large right now, and there's a lot of kids over there, so I know that that's in particular struggle over there. So yeah, we can absolutely include that. Her comment was that she has experienced classes, either herself or her friends, I think in particular at North Quincy High School, where the classes were at or close to capacity, and students struggled to switch when they need to switch, if they wanted to go to, you know, I think down, upper, you know, Advanced to Honors or that kind of thing. It's tough to switch because the classes are full. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, but we, I think that we, I can absolutely have the principals include that, you know, in their, you know, addressing in terms of class sizes. Yeah.
And then arguably, an even more pressing issue for people at this, I think even both schools, I don't want to speak for Quincy High, but I think it is a problem there, is that all the bathrooms have been closed, and I think it's been like this for a while, but it's like because some people will wander the halls with a bathroom pass forever, and then I don't know how you write that into a school improvement plan, but it gets to a problem where like if you want to use the bathroom during class or even during passing period, because there's only like too open in the whole school, you really can't. And then, like, a lot of people have expressed concern about this, but when they open back up, people abuse the system, and I think there needs to be like something put in place because it is something that everyone, like, it's just such a problem because if you genuinely want to use the bathroom between classes, like, you can't because the ones that are open, everyone goes to, and then they're just, because the bathrooms are there in the school, they're just not open because people are abusing the policy.
Yeah, I think that we could include that in facilities, maybe might be a good, a good place for the principals to address that. Yeah.
Thank you, Amy. I just want to make a comment. If you look at the list of all the things we need to accomplish in subcommittees, and you think about the time it takes for us to hear the presentations of every school, of all the PIPs, it stops us from accomplishing many of the subcommittee items. If we can make the presentations shorter in some way, because we're reading them and maybe have it so it's just questions that are being answered, rather than them going through the whole, whole plan again, it would allow us to deal with some of the things we have to deal with. That's my comment. Thank you.
Great.
And this is on us, but I, here's value, and we have been televising subcommittee meetings, but I think there's value in televising the SIPs so that parents can see the school committee interaction, the presentation by the principal on the SIPs. No, I know, I'm just saying that there was a period of time when we didn't do subcommittee meetings, and then during COVID, we did, right? Am I right?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mrs. Lebo.
This is, this is a little hard to say, but we really do read these, and we love our schools, and we think our administrators are doing a terrific job, and our educators are. They don't have to tell us that even though they were five points below, they're better than that school or that district, or, they don't have to explain themselves to us. We know what they're doing. So I don't want them to feel that they have to make, spin everything so that drop in the MCAS scores doesn't look so bad because of comparing it, and then they're all comparing these scores to something completely different from each other. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we trust them, we really do trust them, and we, we don't, they don't need to, they don't need to do that with us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to items.
Thank you.
Item C. DC Student Assessment Update. Ms. Perkins, Mr. Mariani.
Okay, so this is just a, just a quick update on the MCAS. So we, there are two new components to the MCAS this year. So we have the civ, I'm going to talk about the civics field test, and Mr. Mariani is going to speak about the new requirements in science. And so there is a civics field test that is required this year. It's for grade eight. The testing window will be, and this is all very like preliminary, we haven't even been trained on it, so this is just what we know thus far. April 29th to June 7th is the testing window. There will be two sessions that will last approximately an hour in length for each of them, and the students will be tested on test nav, which is, so it's electronic, which is where they do all the other MCAS tests, so the students are familiar with it. The two sessions are going to be a little bit different. So the first one is a state-level performance task, and it's based on one of the seven civics topics from the 2018 frameworks. So the students will have to complete one task each. Each task is based on one civics topic and consists of the following, three, three questions, three one-point constructed response questions, one four-point constructed response question, seven one-point selected response questions, which include multiple choice, multiple select, and technology-enhanced questions. That's the state-level performance task, so that's one session. And then the second session, they're calling it an end-of-course test, and so this is, includes the full breadth of the grade eight civic standards. And this is, will run anywhere from 36 to 38 test questions, including multiple choice, multiple select, and a technology-enhanced question. And all end-of-course questions are machine-scored, and many questions will be based on a text source or some kind of graphic. So each school will be expected to have a percentage of their grade eight students participate in the field test, so not every student will necessarily have to participate in the grade eight field test, but I do not know what the percentage is at this point, so they have not released the specific percentage yet. And sometime at the end of October, or in October, the state will announce which performance task, which civics topic the school has been assigned. So each school will be assigned a topic, a civics topic out of one of the seven, and so that they can practice those topics. So they do have what they're calling school-level performance tasks that are already released and on the department website. And so once you know what the topic is that, like, your eighth grade is going to be tested on, there is a sample performance task that you can download that includes like all of the components basically of what the students, I mean, at least that's what we hope, what the students will see. And so the students will be able to practice using that released practice test. And so that basically is civics, and I'll let Mr. Mariani talk about science.
Thank you. So with science effective this spring, 2024, all of our fifth grade and eighth grade students have been assigned by the department. have been assigned by the Department of Education to participate in the STE Science, Technology, Engineering MCAS Expanded Pilot. This will happen in lieu of the standard STE tests that they've taken in the past, so this is not in addition to, but in place of. We're still, this is very new, so we received this notification just a few days ago, so there's a lot more to learn about what this test is. I'll offer you a brief overview of what's been communicated thus far. The intended purpose of this pilot is to offer an assessment that focuses more on depth versus breadth, and to be more engaging for students, and to emphasize, quote, "doing of science." So what that looks like remains to be seen. Again, we'll see, we'll get more information, hopefully, in the near future. But just a couple items, a couple clarification points. I mentioned all fifth grade and eighth grade students. This is for students who would be taking the standard MCAS. If there's a student who takes the MCAS alt, this is not applicable to, so they would still continue on with the MCAS alt. So those students will not be impacted by this pilot process. DESI does anticipate running a statewide field test next school year, so we are part of a pilot program. This is not, we did not volunteer, this was assigned to us, but again, it looks like in one year, all, all schools, fifth and eighth grade students will be participating in this. So there's two test sessions, as there have been. One session will consist of operational questions from standard STE MCAS. So session one will appear to be very typical for these students, it will, it will look very similar to previous STE tests. Session two will be the one that looks different for these students. The reason why that's important to acknowledge, as we talk about data and we talk about metrics, is DESI will be looking only at session one, as far as accountability goes. So accountability data will only be reflected through session one for our students as they participate in this pilot. Let me see, and just a few things we're waiting on that they, that DESI has communicated to us that we should be getting soon. So we're, we should be receiving slides with updated information about this new test within the next few weeks, so hopefully, we'll see specifically what makes these questions more in-depth, more engaging. We don't, we don't yet know. And our next steps are really to review that process, but we will be, because we are selected for the pilot, we will be guaranteed the opportunity to register for a training process there. So we will be trained on this, and, you know, we will get more information about what this looks like, but it is important, at least, to put on all of your radars, since we were just notified of this a few days ago. Thank you.
On the civics, I'm glad we're teaching civics now. So correct me if I'm wrong, I probably misheard it, but I hope I didn't. You're going, they're going to give us what, what the kids are expected to know before they test them?
No, so it's a performance task, so it's a little bit different than, like, a traditional, like, item, so they're, so what they're going to do is they're, they'll, there's, there's seven topics, that's how I understand it, so, seven topics, and depend, they could say, Broad Meadows, your topic is, you know, student rights and responsibilities, which is one of the topics. And so there is a practice item that is on that topic on the department website, because it involves, like, discussion, and there's task cards, and it's a very different type of assessment than, you know, I, so then, I don't, I don't know how it's going to work, really, but a performance task in general is completely different than what the traditional MCAS is. That's usually, like, you're creating something, you're, you're doing something hands-on, and so this, it's very different. So we'll, we'll, you know, remains to be seen, we'll see how it goes, but, so they do have sample performance tasks that relate to those topics. It's obviously not going to be the same exact task that they're going to ask you to do, but it will at least get kids to be able to practice with a performance task. I hope that makes sense.
Mrs. Cahill.
So did you say they're going to have a percentage of the students, so?
Yes.
Of 100% of our eighth graders, or whatever? And they might say 50% of them?
They may.
Did they give you an understanding of how we were supposed to come up with that 50%? Is it, you know, across, how do we?
Not yet. The only thing they have said is that, and they did not say which accommodations, but they said students with certain accommodations would not participate in the field test. So, but they have not said, like, I have no idea what those accommodations, there's lots of accommodations, I don't know, you know, is that all accommodations? Is it certain accommodations? I'm not sure.
Or even just the range of ability, you know, student, you know, it'd be interesting to see how they want you to determine what that 50%, who they would be, how you choose them.
Yeah.
How, how do we, you know, determine which students are going to take the?
Yeah. There's a webinar, actually, on Friday, both with the assessment office, and then also with the commissioner and Rob Curtin from the DZ's office on, on this topic, so hopefully we'll know more after that webinar.
Mrs. Lebo.
It's fascinating to me, it's a much better sounding assessment.
Yeah.
But, but it's fascinating to me how they're going to pull it off on, on a computer, I don't know. I mean, it's, it really is a much more robust assessment than some of the stuff we've done before, and it would be pretty cool, it'd be interesting to see how it works.
Yeah, I'm really interested to see how it works.
These people really must have had a quiet summer.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Okay, item D, appointment of school nurses. Superintendent.
Thank you. Before you, we have two recommendations for hire. Kelly Ann Coleman, she would be the school nurse at Squanum Elementary School. We would need individual votes for these. And then the next is Robert Salvucci, who would be, become a school resource nurse for us. The other candidate is on hold until licensure is finalized, which will probably happen tomorrow, but we'll put that on the next school committee meeting agenda. So the candidates that you have before you tonight is Kelly Ann Coleman, her resume is at your locations, as well as Robert Salvucci, also resumes at your, his resume is at your location as well, and again, he would be a school resource nurse.
Okay, take a motion for Kelly Coleman. Mr. Begoli.
Before I make the motion to put her name forward, I know Kelly personally, and outstanding young lady. Her father and mother, Peter and Paula, are both edu, were both educators, and I think she'd be a tremendous asset to our, the Quincy Public Schools.
Motion to the motion.
Motion, Mr. Begoli, seconded by the mayor. Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Robert Salvucci, I'll take a motion. Motion to Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley. Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item F, D.C. Grant, Superintendent.
An additional $167,868 in funding was granted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to support the early college high school summer program, bringing the total for last school year to $584,868, so a very large amount of money we're receiving. Thank you to Mr. Segala, Keith Segala and his team for hunting down these grants and getting this money. If we could have a motion to approve this grant?
Motion, Mrs. Hubley, seconded by?
Motion, I think we should also thank Catherine Craven, who's been in our corner from her position up there.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Lebo, Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item F, D.C. Grant, Superintendent.
An additional $167,868 in funding was granted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to support the early college high school summer program, bringing the total for last school year to $584,868, so a very large amount of money we're receiving. Thank you to Mr. Segala, Keith Segala and his team for hunting down these grants and getting this money. If we could have a motion to approve this grant?
Motion, Mrs. Hubley, seconded by?
Motion, I think we should also thank Catherine Craven, who's been in our corner from her position up there.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Lebo, Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item H, QPS school building temperatures, referred to the facilities, transportation and security. Mrs. Hubley and Mrs. Lebo, any comments?
I just received many phone calls on this topic, and then want to move it into facilities.
Same. A lot of communications from parents and students and teachers about the condition. It was very unusual, very unusual, sat to school because of the weather, as we all know, so, so I think we need to, we need to keep on this, because who knows what the new reality is.
Absolutely.
Item I, memorandum of agreement between the school committee and the SEIU Local 888.
We're going to be discussing this, this has to be on the agenda to discuss it.
In the executive session, then we'll come back out.
Okay. Any additional business? Upcoming school committee meetings? Let's see, September 27th, October 11th, October 25th, November 15th, December 13th, all at 6:30 here at Gardington. And we have no reports of any subcommittees, and we need a motion.
I'll make a motion when we go into executive session, for the purpose of contract negotiations, with the caveat, we'll be returning to regular session.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hubley, Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
I'm sorry, did we make a motion?
The motion was made by the mayor, seconded by Mrs. Hubley.
Okay. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
I jumped too quick.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Begoli. All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.